Hey, good evening. My name is Richard Shear and this is a special edition of Civics Forum. Those are the shows around Town Meeting Day, right before Town Meeting Day, where I talk to candidates for school board, candidates for mayor, candidates for city council. I talk about the city budget with people who know the school budget, and we pretty much educate ourselves as to who it is who would be in our municipal government representing us. This is a special edition because I have the distinct pleasure of introducing Jack McCullough to the city of Montpelier, although many of you know Jack because he's been around here a long time. He is my consular in District 2 now. Jack?
Thank you for having me. Good to see you, Richard.
Where in District 2 are you?
I live on Town Street. I've actually lived in, the time I've lived here, in all three different districts at different times. And right now, I'm on Town Street, which is a street that nobody even knows where it is.
Okay, then where is it? I know where it is, but you tell us.
Drive out Main Street towards East Montpelier, and you come to a point where you could turn right to get, go out Town Hill Road. And sometimes when you're waiting to turn there, you'll see on the left, a steep hill with people coming down. That's Town Street.
Oh, so Town Street's the place that people can't get up that hill during the winter?
And slide down in winter, too, yes.
In terms of Montpelier, how long have you been here?
I've been here in 35 years. We moved here in 1983. My wife and I moved here from Michigan, where I'd been working at Legal Aid of Western Michigan. And we moved to Vermont, and we rented a house in Waterbury for a few months, and we moved to Montpelier in August of 1983.
What was like, what was Montpelier like in 1983, except for there were more people here than there are right now?
There are more people. It was, in some ways, a quieter place. There were not as many restaurants, not as much nightlife. People would show, sell these T-shirts that were black T-shirt that said, "Aerial view of Montpelier at night." And it was just black. There's a lot more going on now than there was then. On the other hand, for one thing, we could afford to buy a house in Montpelier in 1983. And the house we bought in 1983, we paid $35,000 for, which in today's dollars would be about $87,000. There's no houses you can buy in Montpelier for $87,000 now. There were businesses, a different kind of businesses in Montpelier than the now. We had three hardware stores. We had...
Just for those who, with short memories, Abisham's, and then next to Abisham's was Summers. Where was the third?
The third one was on State Street, next to the river, where Capital Grounds is now. And it was Nelson Brothers. And we had a shoe store, the leather store on Main Street. We had a grocery store, a small grocery store right on Main Street in Montpelier. There were, it seems that there are more of the kind of businesses that people need to go to, to get things they need.
Our commercial downtown, to a lot of people, seems stagnant. You still see empty storefronts on Main Street. What can we do? What could city council do to improve that?
I do worry about, about the commercial sector downtown. I observe the same thing. You can always expect that there's going to be a certain amount of churn in retail space and businesses that turn over, because there has to be. You're not, never going to have 100% full occupancy, and it's probably not healthy for the city if you do, because that means there's no place for someone new to come in. But to have spaces that are vacant for a long time, have too many spaces vacant, I think is not healthy.
What can council do to promote downtown business that they haven't done already?
It's, it's pretty hard. It's, that's something that I, I'm really interested in learning more about, to see what the city can do to encourage businesses to, to locate in the city. One of the things is I've, as you probably know, I've done a lot of housing advocacy work. If we could, we've had a declining population. Getting more people into town and getting more people who can afford to be here is one thing that will encourage businesses to be here. We have younger people who want to be able to walk to work, walk to where they go, and businesses are, are one, one thing we can do. But I think this, this city probably needs to take a more active role. We do have an Economic Development Corporation now, and I think that the downtown business sector is one of the things that they're going to be interested in.
The Economic Development Corporation was formed last year. What do you see them doing? That they're not, that they're not doing right now?
I'm not sure what they're doing right now. That's something that's, that's not what I focused a lot on. I, I think that what we need to see is both an active role in looking for retail businesses, but also offices. I've heard of other places. I heard of an organization that was looking for office space in, in the Barry-Montpelier area. They, they called Barry and said, "We're looking for an office space here." They, they mobilized, they quickly jumped on, showing them a whole range of office spaces that were available. And I think they wound up staying in Montpelier, but the city seemed to take a pretty active role in trying to help the business relocate down there. And I would like it if, if Montpelier could do that here, too.
Do you feel that the planning department is right-sized to do something like that?
I think that a number of the departments, and the Planning and Community Development Office is one of them, is probably smaller than it needs to be. You know, you hear people talk about, "Well, why don't we assign this new project, this new activity to one of the departments?" And it's always a trade-off. Well, what do you want me to stop doing in order to take on this, this new activity? I think the Parks Department is, is a similar situation. There's a lot of talk about people wanting a, a new park in Montpelier, taking some of the open space on Saban's pasture and turning it into some kind of parkland. But there, there is a couple of price tags attached to that. One is, is the city going to spend the money to, to buy the land to make a park? Another is, do we have the, the staff in the Parks Department, Parks and Recreation, to, to maintain and provide programming for a park on that side of the city, which would certainly be a good thing. But so I think there are things that we need to do. We probably need to look at not cutting staff, but where do we need staff that is inadequate for the, for the jobs they have?
Do you feel that the city budget has any impact on housing prices in, in the city? That we have the highest tax rate already. Would you be into considering lifting that tax rate?
Well, I look at it in a different way. If we could...
We have the highest collective tax rate between city and school.
Right. What I was, what I was going to say is that encouraging housing development is a way to help reduce the burden on taxes. If we have, are able to have new families with children in the schools, that mobilizes state aid to education, which, which should help some of the strain on the, on the taxpayers.
But doesn't it seem circular? You know, that the idea of raising the budget in order to attract more people, in in actuality, might attract fewer people? When their property tax is such a differential between East Montpelier and neighboring communities in Montpelier? Do you feel that, that we've reached a point in taxation where we can raise our taxes significantly to, to gain more city services?
I think there are some areas where we might need to gain more city services, but I, my vision for Montpelier is really to have, people have heard me say this a lot. I think Montpelier is the best place in Vermont to live. People want to live here.
Why?
The, we've got a population that's really involved in, in the life of the community. We have a range of ages. We have great schools. We have a great active downtown. As we were talking about it, I think there's more going on downtown than there used to be. People want, want to be here, and, and they can't find places to move to. And if we could, if, if we could provide those opportunities, people would be here.
Where is there empty land, other than perhaps Saban's pasture over on Berry Street, or Alan Goldman's land out on Terrace in, in that area? Where is there empty land to build on in this town?
There's not a lot. There's, there's some large parcels, as you, as you pointed out. There are some, some buildings or, that are not being fully used or used at all that could conceivably support housing. Some of the upper floors in downtown, we're, we're doing the French block, but I think there are other places in upper floors in downtown where they could be used for housing. We've got buildings like the Funeral Home on, on Main Street, which has been vacant for years. You can, you can certainly imagine that being, being used for housing.
But isn't that ultimately Jeff Jacobs' decision, whether to use it for housing or not? The owner of that property?
Oh, of course. Yeah. I'm, the city is not going to, and I wouldn't want the city to go to individual owners and tell them, "Here's what you have to do with this property."
What leverage does the city have, then? That's, is that leverage, neutral leverage? In terms of not giving up funds, existing city funds to leverage, or would you anticipate the city putting together packages?
Like what?
Helping with mortgages and things like that.
I, I don't see the city supporting or, or underwriting mortgages for private owners, if, if that's what you have in mind. But again, we have, we, we have spaces available. I think even getting into the conversation with, with the property owners with vacant property. Several years ago, I was part of a committee on addressing barriers to housing development in Montpelier, and we had a series of recommendations, including addressing properties that are either being, being abandoned or being demolished by neglect and creating enforcement mechanisms so that property owners don't allow their buildings to deteriorate and become useless when they could be providing housing for people who want to live here.
For renters in this city, would you see council revisiting, having landlords put up their, their properties for inspection and pay for that on a regular basis?
I think that that is something that's worth examining. I'm not, I, in my years of working with tenants, it's very hard to get people to, it's very hard to get landlords to maintain their property. It's also, also can be difficult to get tenants to, to complain about their property because they're, they're concerned that they might be evicted if they do complain. And so, one of the things that I've advocated for at the state level is a regular scheduled inspection system, so every housing unit would be inspected. Now there's...
Could that be inherently inflationary on, on renters? Insofar as, it's like when businesses charge a business to be in their establishment, the costs that are incurred by them are passed on to the business. Isn't that the same with renters?
There's always a cost. And one of the questions that we would need to look at is whether the, the cost of the inspection program is, is going to be justified based on whether we really, based on the scope of the problem. But tenants, tenants would certainly pay the cost.
Well, not only the inspection, but the remediation of the problem would be passed on to the tenants, most likely?
Everything a landlord does is ultimately paid by the tenant.
Right. So, would that move, make it more difficult? Are renters caught in a, in a vice? On one end, you know, they have problems in their housing. On the other end, if those problems are remediated, they're paying more. It's a no-win for the, for the renter.
I, I've heard that argument from landlords a lot, and, and my concern is that there's a certain level of...
Safety?
Housing maintenance and safety, that property should not be allowed to fall below. And landlords just should not be allowed to rent out properties that don't meet pretty minimal standards. And those are already set out in state law.
Are there areas of the city budget, you spoke about some departments, perhaps needing more staff. Is there any area that you would offset that in? Is there any area of city spending right now where you could see an examination? Periodically, council examines departments, and it's a delicate balance. You know, where you pick up, sometimes you shed. Is there any area that you would see for possible cost savings or programmatic advantage?
I think every area is, is subject to examination. And, and I wouldn't say anything's off limits. I, I can't tell you today that here's an example of something that I think we should cut, because I, I don't know that, that there is one, but I think every area needs to be examined for that.
The Carlot Project, the Taylor Street Project. What was your thought on that? It dragged on for a decade, you know, and it's finally, they're putting shovels in this summer. What's your feeling on that project?
I think that it's going to be beneficial to the city to have the Transit System Center, and also to have additional housing there. It's been a tremendous effort by the city. I don't know what the city would have done. I don't know what the decision-makers would have thought if, if they'd known this is how long it was going to take.
The Recreation Department, is that properly sized? Recreation in this city, is that sized correctly?
I really can't answer that. You know, years, for years, when my, my kids were using the Recreation Department, they were signing up for the, for the sports. I had a better feel for what was going on in the Recreation Department. I don't really know what, what they're doing now. The, the building is obviously a real mess.
What, what do you feel about that mess of a building? Do you feel that a $5 million, $7 million recreation facility is merited?
I, I can't answer that. I, I can't answer that without study, and it's something I haven't studied.
So you would possibly support increasing our capital borrowing by 5 to 7 million for a recreation center?
I don't, I don't think that's the message that anyone should take from what I'm saying. The message that people should take is that any expenditure, especially one of that magnitude, is something that would need to be studied before, before we agree to it.
The city council established years ago a bonding limit. And it's an advisory limit, but it's been set. We have the methane project at the water treatment plant. We have the parking committee recommending a parking garage at State and Main. We have a recreation facility that's being studied to 5 to 8 million dollars. That would blow off the, the lid of that capital borrowing. Would you be in favor of changing capital borrowing to make it possible for the city to go beyond established limits?
I'd be in favor of evaluating each one of these questions and determining whether the value to the city was sufficient to, to justify the expenditure.
So it is possible that you would vote to change the city's bonding limit?
What I would say is that we, we need to know what the city's needs, what the benefits to each of these projects are, and, and whether they can, can be justified.
In terms of the city budget, for the last six years, they've tried to benchmark the, the budget to inflation. Would you favor that kind of benchmarking to inflation?
A few years ago, the city had a series of workshops over, over at the high school, and brought in people from all over the city to talk about what their priorities were, what they would like to see the city doing, and what direction we would like to see the city move in. And you, I don't know if you were at one of those workshops. People were given little dots to say what was important to them. There were not many people who were saying, "The city should do less, and the city should pay its workers less, and the city should reduce the size of our staff." And so, I think we need to pay attention to what the needs of the city are, and I think we need to be very responsible with the, with the taxpayers' money. But we also know that taxpayers seem to support having an active city government.
Do you feel that there's any sort of connection between low school enrollment, which we have now, and the highest tax rate, collective tax rate in the state, or one of the highest collective tax rates in the state? Does that have an impact on, on younger families moving into this district?
I think the primary impediment to families moving into the district is the cost of housing. And I don't mean the property tax. I mean just the cost of getting into housing in the city.
Is there anything that we can do to change that cost of housing? Even if we were to add on the margin, you know, 10, 15 different houses, wouldn't the demand just instantly chew that up?
I think that there's a, a limit to how much new housing the, the market can absorb by year. I think we, we need to. The council has established a priority for developing new housing. The Regional Planning Commission has established benchmarks for not only Montpelier, but other towns in the area to help support the anticipated need for, for additional housing. We've got the, the new zoning ordinance, which...
How was that? Were you, you were attentive to that, I imagine, having an interest in housing. Did that end up the way that you thought it would end up, and were you kind of happy that it ended up where it ended up?
I was more than attentive to it. I was working on it from, you know, for many, many years.
Well, bless those people, because I was going to say this was a multi-year project.
It was a multi-year project. I, the other night, I, I joked to the council that I spend more time at council meetings than anyone who's not on the council, and this might be a little bit of an exaggeration, but, but I spent, and other people on the housing task force, spent many years working on that project to make it, to create conditions for, for new housing development. One of the things that we see that I think is, so generally, yes, you know, could there be changes in some of the details? I'm sure there could be. And I'm sure that as, as we have experience with the ordinance that was passed, there may be things that, that need to be changed, or that make, make sense being changed. But one of the things, as we talk about developing new housing, that we have in the city now, is the ability for homeowners to, to subdivide their homes, to create apartments, or, or turn houses into duplexes. And I think that that's something that could, could make a difference for people. We have, we have people whose kids are grown, who are now two people living in a 4,000-square-foot house, which is bigger than they need, and maybe more expensive than they want to be. And but they also love their house, and they don't necessarily want to move out. And so, if they can, if they can subdivide that house and enable a family to live in the house with them, or in their own, in their own home within that, within that structure, that's a housing opportunity for people in the city. And we've had, in Montpelier, the First Time Home Buyer Program, which has enabled people to buy in the city and, and bring children into the school district. And in the long run, I think bringing young families into the city is, is going to be a good thing. I don't think we should be, I don't want to have Montpelier be, be a city where most of the people are...
Where the senior center is booming.
Where, well, I think it's fine for the senior center to be booming, but I don't think we want to have a city where you and I are the, everyone's our age.
One more on downtown, revisiting downtown. Parking. That's something that people are constantly complaining about in this town. How do you view parking, particularly parking in downtown?
As I think about the development needs in the city, you know, I, I always say that we have tremendous excess capacity for almost all of our infrastructure. Parking is one area, and where we don't have excess capacity. And I think, I think we probably need more parking. I know that people talk about, "We want to have a walkable city. We don't want people to park right away." But, but I think about, for instance, the proposed hotel downtown with the, with the parking structure right next to it. I think that if we...
Within the TIF, so that...
Right.
It's paid for by future, future tax revenues.
Potentially, yeah. And that'll have to be more fully developed. But I think if we see that happen, people will come to visit Montpelier, they'll park their cars in the parking garage, and they'll leave them there. And they'll spend all their time right in this, right in downtown. They'll be spending their money at our downtown restaurants. They'll be buying things in our downtown stores. And without, without the parking for the hotel, that's not going to happen.
I've got a, one question. It's, it's the most uncomfortable question, but it's the elephant in the room. And that's the controversy surrounding your appointment. In retrospect, when Anne knew pretty much that she was not going to have opposition in January, do you think Anne should have stepped down at that point and said that she's going to leave her council seat, and then had two elections in District 2? In retrospect, do you think that would have been better?
There, there are two answers to that question. One is no. I think that we wouldn't have been well, the city wouldn't have been well-served to go that, three months with that vacancy on the council. And two, the other part of it is that the, the appointment process that was followed is the process that is set forth in the charter, even if...
Right. From that point on, we, we all agree that that is the process in the charter. But do you feel that, that just at that point in time, it might have been a better decision for her? For the town, actually?
I don't. But, and, and part of it is that even if she'd stepped down earlier, there wouldn't have been a special election. There would not have been two...
No, there would have been two district seats.
No. But, but one of them would still be a vacancy, which would be appointed by the council, because the charter provides for council vacancies to be appointed by the council. Now, if you're asking, should the charter be changed?
Okay, should the charter be changed?
I don't think so. I think what we've seen, this was unique, this process was unique in my perspect, in my experience. In the last five, 10 years, this is the third council vacancy that's been filled by, by a council appointment. And, and the previous two didn't have anything like this, this level of acrimony.
There was Angela, Terry, and Sarah. This would be the fourth.
Okay. Angela is the one I was forgetting about, yeah. I, I, we never saw anything like the, the acrimony that we had this time around, and I...
And that's why I was... And that's why I was asking the question. You know, the acrimony is upsetting to me as, as well as you, as well as everyone, and, you know, like to get beyond that.
Oh, yeah. We, uh, this isn't, isn't what anyone hoped. I think that, naturally, I'm, I'm pleased with the outcome, but, but the process was, was not really in, not really consistent with the kind of, uh, community we hope to live in.
Uh, we all live, or you and I, I should say, not we all, but you and I live in District Two. How can we bring District Two back together for this kind of acrimony at this point? What, what could be done to pretty much heal District Two so it doesn't become a perpetual campaign all the way to Town Meeting Day?
Well, it'd be unfortunate if that happens. My job, uh, now that I'm on the council, is to serve all the people in District Two, and that's what I'm planning to do. And my hope is that my track record will encourage people across the spectrum to support me. You know, I, I think of myself, as I was going into these council meetings, as kind of the ultimate, "What you see is what you get" candidate.
How so?
Because, because I'm pretty well-known for my public activities in the city. I think people know who I am and, uh, and what I stand for, and I'm, I'm not going to change.
Now, you, you're known in this town for housing, but you also work with legal aid.
Yes.
What about our police department? Are there ways that, that the police department could be improved? From your legal aid perspective?
From my legal aid perspective, most of our clients don't have, the most, I'm not aware of legal cases that most of our clients have with, with the police. I can tell you that, uh, a few years ago, when the, when the proposal was to deploy tasers in the city, there is a committee to study the issue. I didn't get on the committee, but I was very vocal in my, uh, opposition to the deployment of tasers.
Why?
A couple of reasons. One is that tasers are portrayed as not being lethal weapons, whereas in fact, they are lethal weapons. And a certain number of people, based on, uh, medical conditions or how they're used, will actually, uh, die as a result of having a taser, uh, applied to them. But, and that's typically a small percentage. But, but the other, uh, big concern I have with tasers is that, uh, if the, if they're out there, they kind of lower the, uh, the threshold for the use of force. And I don't think we want that. I don't think that it's justified in the, in the city of Montpelier.
The council people are, uh, as you, as you know, sitting in council, that's not the only time that's spent for council people. There, there's time in preparation, but there's also time sitting on organizations, uh, as a council member. Which organization would you want to sit on? Which outside organization would you want to be the council representative on?
I, I'm kind of the new guy and-
So you get the low, so you, you got the low part of the totem pole.
I may get the last pick. Uh, I'm not really sure. I, I know that, uh, one of the other members of the council, Rosie Kruger, has indicated that she wants to serve as a, the council representative to the Housing Task Force, and I think that's a great thing because, uh, she's very interested in the issue and has some, uh, has already given us some good ideas. I'm open to pretty much doing whatever. I know the council has a seat on the, on the library board.
That they do. Montpelier Alive. They've got a seat on any number of-
Any number of boards.
-number of commissions, boards.
Yeah. Public safety.
I was just wondering if there was one that, that just caught your eye. When, when Connor came and spoke to me, he said that he wanted Montpelier Alive. He wanted to work on the city's image with those people. Is there something other, you stay away from housing, but other than that, is there another one that, that would just catch your eye? Assuming another council person weren't interested.
Well, the things that I'm very interested in are, are public safety and also the library. And those are two things that, I, I don't know what a potential role would be, but they're things that I'm interested in.
And I just have one final question. We have some friends who are interested in moving to Montpelier, and they don't believe Sandra and myself. Why should they move to Montpelier? What's your opinion?
Well, it's a funny thing. Probably 20 years ago, you and I had this conversation.
Absolutely.
And I told you how great it was to live in the city of Montpelier, and it, this is a great place to raise a family. My children have had, had a great, uh, community life and also a great education living here. I think that, uh, Montpelier has, uh, has some really unique characteristics, partly because of being the city, uh, the capital city, but also because, uh, we have, uh, we have great people living here. As I said at the beginning, it's, uh, there's a lot of, uh, people who are involved in making the city the great kind of place that it is. And, you know, people want to volunteer at all kinds of things, and, uh, I, I'm a real booster, real cheerleader for the city of Montpelier.
Fantastic. Jack, thank you so very much for coming to see us.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me.
This is our special edition of the Civic Forum. Thank you for watching.